This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
It's calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for July 9th at 6:00. Again, if we could start by standing in same [inaudible 00:01:38].
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, they give it a move. I tell you, first we move the clocks, we get the clocks back, and now they move the flag.
And this clock is working.
Both clocks are working. Both clocks are working now, so whatever the mystery was that got solved.
In second floor conference.
Well, I haven't checked on yet. Anyway, good, all right, so that was called to order. We have a quorum. I'm thinking John's coming, don't know otherwise, but we'll get going anyhow. So, next up is Citizen Speak, and we have Tammy Walunus, who we haven't seen in many months.
I've been watching online.
I bet you have. Okay, I think the mic's working okay. It should be, yeah.
Yes, I've many times have sent emails or text messages to you guys to say, "The mic's not on. I can't hear anybody speaking." Tammy Walunus, 298 College Highway. I am here on behalf of the Historical Society, excuse me, Historical Society. We want to thank everybody that came out on July 4th for the Ice Cream Social. It was a huge hit, and we had many people come through that were amazed with the changes that have happened again inside of the Clark Chapman. Now, the other thing that we have coming up is Celebrate Southampton. It's Friday, August 9th. There's a grab-and-go dinner at the church, and then Time Stretchers will be performing. 6:00 on is the free concert that night. And then Saturday, August 10th, we have Memory Hour here at the church, and that's going to be Doric Dodd speaking on the town bell tower, the steeple. 10:30, we have our town picnic. We have three food trucks.
10:30, 11:00?
11:30. Well, people start coming at 11:00. 11:30 is when we're going to kick off Blessing and all that stuff. Three food trucks, we have Riff's, Vlad's Pizza, and Local Burgi coming back, and we will have free Crooked Stick popsicles. Citizen of the Year is going to be done again at 12:30, and we have music from 1 to 4. We will post those speakers, singers, at another time. We do, we have a bounce house, the balloonist, the barnyard, dunk tank, we're looking for volunteers, the food vendors. We had a select board member, yeah?
I can do something.
We have over 32 craft vendors and eight organizations, and I just found out that there are two more organizations, so I will be in contact with you on that. With that being said, I thank you for your time, but I would love to see if licenses and permits could move up closer in the agenda. Thank you.
Can I just ask you one question?
Yes.
One thing that we know, but it kind of went through one window and out the other. We have our birthday coming up, our 250th anniversary, and I think the Historical Commission may have it on their agenda to talk about. I don't know that there's any thought or plan on their part yet, and I know you guys have started talking about it a bit, but somehow we need to join forces here and figure out how we can plan this and get volunteers on planning committee of sorts, or if you've made any headway on that, would you share what you?
Well, at the 4th of July, Teddy showed up.
Oh, really?
And we got some lovely pictures of him with everybody, and inside and out, and we talked about several items that we're going to do. We're going to start promoting, the Historical Society is going to do a cookbook, and we are hoping to get actual photos of people and food items, and have it be a 250th anniversary cookbook that we will be able to have to hand out, or to sell. It's a fundraiser for-
Like old recipes from?
Yep, they're back, or new ones that are loved by generations.
Have to be Southampton families, or can it be people that didn't live here 250?
It can be anybody.
Anybody.
Anybody that has a good recipe, and if they have a story behind it, we want that also, because we have found on several of the pages, there is extra room that you can write in information. So, like I say, we're going to have photos of different things here in town, of people that we can, and we're really customizing it to... And people say the cookbooks, another cookbook, well, it's a fundraiser, it's for a good event, and our town is celebrating 250 years.
That's great, yeah.
It was talked about having the one-room schoolhouse open. We are really hoping to have more people show up that will help volunteer to do stuff.
Yeah, I think the Historical Commission's meeting, if not tonight, this week sometime, and I think they might pick it up. I know I had talked to Bob Cozab briefly about it, just saying, you know, has there been any discussion, any thought yet on your part about what we might all do? Because I've got the program from the last one, which, you know, was pretty involved.
Yes.
It was, you know, a series of events, I think, over many months. It wasn't just a couple of days. So, and there've been obviously other towns in the neighborhood that have celebrated their 250th, and I do believe there are, I'm not sure if it's Mass Cultural Council, but through various agencies, I believe there are some grants available specifically for towns that are celebrating their 250th. So I will take responsibility and take a look for stuff and see what's behind it.
Okay, that is great, because Mass Cultural Council, if you don't get in by their deadlines, you don't get anything.
Yeah.
And that's what happened to us last year.
Not just them, but it may be somebody else. But I think there was a special fund that somewhere I read about, and I just check on that. But I think, you know, we should, you know, we don't need to decide tonight, but just to get the word out that we do have our very special birthday coming up next year, in 2025, and, you know, we ought to be thinking about how we can get a committee together and start doing some brainstorming, and what kinds of things we'd like to have. And if you guys are starting to take a lead on a cookbook, that's great, but I think we can, you know, add more people and more-
We're hoping to add a lot more people, because with everything else that we're still planning to do next year, but also pulling in the 250th theme, it's still, I mean, this celebrates Southampton, we start planning in January.
Yep, straight up.
And that's just a two-day thing in August.
Just a quick insertion here, and I know this came up before. There's, at some point, I think it was the Historical Society did a Places of Interest, like poster thing, black and white, it's kind of dated. I know I had a copy of it, I know I shared it with Chris at one point. No, I didn't.
No, it was a thing that Ted had done one background for a map?
It's not a map, it's, anyway, I just think that could be updated possibly as for part of that.
Yeah, we can talk about that, too.
I will, I'll see if Heidi knows about that, because I know she is updating the book that we have that's going to be published, and there's a couple other, there's a children's book that's going to be coming out for the 250th, and we have several things going on, it's just we did not have any intention of being able, we are very limited in funds.
Yeah.
And, so-
So, I think we can, if we can figure out, you know, just put a call out for some volunteers that are interested in helping do a planning session and be involved in developing the celebration for next year, that would be great, so.
Yes, definitely.
We're putting out the call right now, guys. Anybody who's listening, contact Select Board, contact Tommy, Tammy, contact Historical Commission, whomever you may know, but at least reach out, and we'll be glad to sign you up. And no idea of time commitment or anything yet, but I mean, we need to just start brainstorming ideas and researching what other towns have done and figuring out what makes sense for Southampton to try and do.
And now that East Hampton Media has more workers, employees, they're actually going to be at the Memory Hour that Saturday for Celebrate, and then at the event again. So we want to pull in all the help we can with them also for promoting, and you'll see, start to see the posters. We had a couple corrections we had to make, but you'll start to see those go up around town. And we're always looking for volunteers, and we are always looking for raffle items. So, if you, please contact me if any of those are interested.
Great, thanks, Tammy, appreciate it. All right. Okay, a couple things here. Just one announcement, just wanted to, I think this is our first meeting since we had the special election, so thank you, everybody, for coming out. We had over 1,000 people that came out to vote, and we thank you very much for making the effort to make your voice heard, and we had about, of those that came to vote, we had about 60% approval, I think, on the vote, so that did pass, and we will be working diligently on the next steps. There's many, 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 many steps to get done as we go forward, so that-
And again, lots, lots, lots of information on the town website.
Correct, yeah. So there's lots of things, and just keep checking in on the town website to learn what's going on. Since Tammy's here, I would take, if nobody objects, could we move up the one-day wine and malt permit that's way down under licenses and permits, since that's for the Historical Society? Would somebody mind just reading that off?
I move that we approve one-day wine malt license for the Southampton Historical Society at Conan Park, Friday, August 9th, Saturday, August 10th, 2024. 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the 9th, and 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on the 10th for the Celebrate Southampton event just discussed.
Second. All right, motion in second. All right, any objection? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, good, all set. So we will, we will get that signed and off to you. All right, thanks, Tammy. All right, starting off with a couple things here on our agenda, we've got some appointments and resignations. I'll take the couple resignations, just because I've been working a long time with Virginia Ahart on the Bylaw Advisory Committee. Virginia has put in a letter and has put in her resignation from that committee effective July 1, and just wanted to thank Virginia for the many, many, many years of being involved in a variety of town things, but especially in the Bylaw Advisory Committee. She's been through many iterations of it over time, and we really just wanted to thank her for all her volunteer efforts and her service to the town, so much, much appreciate all that. And then secondly, a second resignation, Sabina McCarthy, resignation as the Assistant Town Clerk, effective June 27, 24. And again, Sabina, thank you very much for all that you did to pull together two town elections in the absence of our actual town clerk and in coordination with her, but manning the poll booths and the polling place and getting all the mail-out ballots mailed out, actually, and getting them all recorded as they came back in. So much, again, appreciate all the work you put in to help the town do what it needed to do on the two special, on the annual election and the special election.
Second.
Okay, so, yes, I'll have a, so we accept a motion on, I guess, both of those, that's the motion that we accept the resignations for Virginia Ahart and for Sabina McCarthy. So I think I heard Dan second?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, now I'll be quiet. Would somebody like to pick up some of the appointments?
I'll read some off. I'd like to do a reappointment for Karen Adamski for the Zoning Board of Appeals, term expires June 30, 2025. Adam Lumber, reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals Associate, term expires June 30, 2027. Myself, Daniel Lavalley, reappointment Conservation Commission, term June 30, 2027. Chris Fowles, reappointment Cost Efficiencies Committee, term to expire June 30, 2025. John Lumber, reappointment Cost Efficiencies Committee, term to expire June 30, 2025. Ian Ealingsworth, reappointment Cost Efficiencies Committee, term to expire June 30, 2025. Lisa Polluda, reappointment Cost Efficiencies Committee, term to expire June 30, 2025. Bob Riggs, reappointment Cost Efficiencies Committee, term to expire June 30, 2025.
You can stop actually right there, because, because Scott-
I was on, I was on-
Oh, I know. No, Scott was, Scott was up there, but we had actually already appointed Scott a couple of meetings ago. We had appointed him to Cost Efficiencies Grant, Public Safety, and Senior Center Building Committee, so Scott, we already got you in for the long haul, okay? So, we have these, these various, couple for zoning board, one for conservation, and others for cost efficiencies. Is everybody okay to take those as a group, or do you want to divide them up further for any discussion?
Take them as a group.
All right, and we have a motion, and we have a second for these.
Yes.
All right, Stephen second. All right, any discussion on anybody? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll do that. And I will add, we are looking probably for a couple of members for the Cost Efficiencies Committee and also for the Bylaw Advisory Committee, so please reach out. We will have a little bit more of a description about the duties and what those committees are about on the town website, if you go to the volunteer page on the town website. Those are ones that are lacking a couple of members, and I think we are still looking for somebody on the Board of Assessors.
And Conservation.
Conservation Commission. We have to get going, and we've got to figure out a good strategy on the Housing Trust. So we've got lots of openings on town committees, and would be, we'll be reaching out to figure out how we can get you all involved, those of you who would like to try something new. All right? Good, all right, so that takes care of our appointments and resignations. How about reports? Scott?
So, the Treasurer Collector and I, we had our first introductory meeting with Superintendent Roan last week, just to talk about some of the VR stuff, but more importantly, to offer any help or assistance that he may need during this transition period, especially with the financials of the school coming up, so if there's anything that we could have, we could help him with, we're going to be there for them. Obviously, it has a huge impact on the town side, so a little bit of a self-interest there. Southampton, actually, there's been a few newspaper articles about Trails, but I do want to just point out that Southampton was actually awarded $208,000 this year from Mass Trails, although it was in a slightly different format. It was a combination of the requested grant for FY25 and the remaining $78,000 from FY24 that we hadn't expended yet for that grant. So it was taken out of a little bit of a different funding mechanism from Mass Trails. Talking to Amanda, they use their ARPA funds, and it should extend, we should have this grant until December 31, 2026, so we don't have to seek an additional extension next year.
That gives us more of a leeway to spend it, because every time we've gotten these Mass Trails grants for the Greenway, it's been just a yearly grant, and it's been very, very hard with the percentages of work that has to get done by our engineer, Tyne Bond, and coordinating that with DOT, that has to approve it, it's just caused delay and delay, so that's great. So there's some leftover that couldn't be spent this fiscal year, the 78, and then we had requested from the, through the grant committee, $130,000 for this fiscal year, so that's, that's what they ended up giving us. So we actually did get the grant, even though you're seeing in the Gazette that Waitley and Williamsburg and East Hampton and everybody got Mass Trails. Well, we did, too, it's just under a different pot. So, yeah, Stephen.
Can I just ask for-
Stephen, Stephen.
For what did we get Mass Trails? This is Greenway, the bridge, the boat?
No, no, this is continuation of the Greenway design work.
Okay.
Yep, so we're still on the whole design part of the-
And we're on the horns of the dilemma on the bridge.
We'll get to that with Scott, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, Cindy, that was my question.
So for the bridge, we're still waiting. We did seek a second opinion from VHB. We had someone who's donating their time to look at it. Should have some results pretty soon. The two issues are the cost and the timing, so it does look like the $200,000 probably is going to be considered reasonable, but there might be some alternatives.
And this is for installation of that bridge. So, for folks who are listening, this is, we had a grant from, again, from Mass Trails to put in the new bridge, replacing the old suspension bridge down at the Manhand Meadows Sanctuary. Got the grant for that, but then the cost that has come in for actual installation, we have a very logical, portable sort of prefab bridge that can be installed, but it's the actual pylons or whatever pillars to install the bridge on the banks, that is costing more money than we had ever predicted, I gather. Is that the issue? Okay. So that's what is being looked at now by this outside engineer?
Yep.
Okay.
So timing-wise, we're probably going to miss the window for this year, just because, you know, it takes 60 days for the prefab bridge to be, to be made and delivered, and then we have to bid it out, and we have to fit into the construction schedule, and then, you know, we're probably into the late fall at that point. I know that there's some environmental concerns, that we're probably going to miss the window at that point, so we are probably looking until next year to do that, unfortunately.
And we may have to request an extension then for Mass Trails?
Yes, I've talked to Amanda already on that, so.
And they're not, they're not saying no? They haven't-
No, I have to submit some paperwork.
We have to put in a formal request?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep. We have our first VR training next Thursday, mostly for the core accounting team, myself, the Treasurer's Office, and the Town Accountant, and then after that, we're going to have our general training for all the departments. We had a little bit of a hiccup in the last couple weeks with the transition to the water bills, which caused our water bills to be a little bit late this year, or this quarter. So Brett did send out notifications as much as he could, so if anyone hasn't received their water bill yet, it should be coming. We have Assistant Town Accountant interviews starting scheduled for next week. The Wi-Fi equipment's been delivered, and NOVUS has started the installation. It'll probably, we're going to have to schedule a weekend, it'll probably take Friday and a Saturday to do that, once everything is completed, but there shouldn't be really any interruptions to town business.
Great.
Last night, the Ad hoc Tech Committee, we met, I'll let Dan probably go into the details, with Joel, who's a former municipal official, just talked about establishing the next steps, and, you know, what's the potential for Southampton, and partnering with one of our local MLPs. We also met with NOVUS, and we're still waiting for the quote, but we're talking about expanding our managed IT to police fire and the library. The salary survey requests have been emailed and mailed. Actually, we got our first one just a little while ago from Belcher Town, so we're looking forward to that, so we should be getting, you know, the next couple of weeks, you should have a pretty good data set, and we can move forward. Once we get all the data, I can move forward to the next step.
So this is, again, to go out to comparable communities asking for their salary scales?
Yep, and I, and we did get a bill from Collins Center. I reached out to Mary, I haven't received her response yet, so I'm going to try to schedule a time to talk to her about that.
Yeah, she needs to know that I think the Select Board is not satisfied with the work that the Collins Center did.
So Rep. Peace and Senator Vellis had made some requests on behalf of the town in the Economic Development Bond Bill for $251 million to go towards the Public Safety Complex building. Our town clerk, with the resignation, our town clerk is keeping office hours as much as she can, mostly in the morning. Lucy's been coming in. We do have a pretty good volunteer support staff, people that are former town clerks or Assistant Town Clerks are volunteering to help keep the office open. Starting tomorrow, there should be a few more volunteers, so it won't have that much of an impact on the operations, but we are going to try to obviously fill that position as, as soon as possible, so. Wetlands delineation for college highways moving forward, estimate's going to be about $4,800, and our portion's going to be $2,400. We're still working with our KP Law, Katie, to do the rest of the due diligence. We've ordered the title report and everything. Yep.
Will the Wetlands report be delivered as CAD or GIS file on the survey of the entire property?
That I don't know, but I can ask.
Yeah, that's fundamental, and I'd like to know who the consultant is for the Wetland delineation and the survey. They're both necessary services.
Do you have the preference for the CAD or PDF? Would you like a GIS?
No, no, I want it to be available to town staff to add to their system.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, did you want, is that why you asked for the GIS, or seeing if we would get the GIS files so they could add it to the town?
Well, first of all, we need the survey, in whatever form.
Okay, you'll take it.
Paper plan with all of the data provided.
Right, but then the delineation can be in, not in any particular format, you want it in GIS, or that's your recommendation, or?
So, a delineation has to be surveyed in relative to the property plan. I'm just asking how that will be accomplished.
Okay, if we need to specify in the scope, then that's what, we need to do that, but-
I'll chime in offline.
Okay.
Then we're using Heritage, so I know that they've done previous work on the land before, so they're familiar with it. Yeah, great.
Yeah, and I think what they did, though, for the Clark Street one, they didn't actually do that Wetlands themselves, they farmed it out to GZA.
GZA, yep, there you go.
Which were the ones that did the park-
Right, Heritage did the survey.
Park Master Planner, yeah.
So that all comes together, sure, yep.
Yeah, so good.
That's the answer, thank you.
So, one, one quick question, and I don't, I haven't researched, I've just seen a little bit of chit-chat on social media, just some confusion over our excise bills. Did things go out late also on our excise tax bills? I've seen a couple of comments about-
I got mine right on time.
Yeah?
I saw that, I saw, I think I saw what you were referring to, somebody that claimed they should have got it three months ago.
They didn't get their bill, and now they've got a huge penalty fine or something, but I think-
Oh, I didn't see that.
I think the excise taxes go out much earlier, right? Those were, would have been months ago, right?
No, she, the, there's a file, I believe it's every two months, because there's always, like you buy a new car, it doesn't wait for the next year, right? So there's-
Right, right, okay, true.
Or you turn in a plate, that she pulls, the deputy collector pulls it, sends it to her, and those are bills.
Yeah, I don't know, but anyway, if anybody has issues with their, their tax bill, their excise tax, come talk to the town treasurer. That's the best, best place to go, rather than, you know, chit-chatting amongst people ourselves who don't really have all the details. Just come to the source and see what information you can get, okay? All right, next, how about some Select Board reports? Anybody have any meeting work to report on? John, how about, I think, from your side?
Yeah, so I was late today because I've been up at the high school since 1:00 doing back-to-back interviews for the next business administrator. So we had two really good candidates, both would be a great selection, there was a committee of nine. We all weighed in and gave our opinion to the superintendent, who ultimately has, his next step will be to make a recommendation to all 32 school board members and hope that we can get at least four committees to approve the hiring, so we can get a business administrator in there next week.
So the superintendent has started, obviously?
It is, this is the second week, it's only Tuesday. I pointed out, it's really only five days since she took the 4th of July, 5th of July off.
Exactly.
But he is, he's up there, hit the ground running, and the intent is to have joint sessions of all school committees next week to name a business administrator, an assistant superintendent, and a director of People Services or Special Ed Director.
Okay.
He's up and running.
Good, very good, okay. Anything else? Any other committees? Okay, no?
Well, the Planning Board, Matt, as you know, and let me just summarize it by saying that I have significant concerns about how the Chair is sharing information in advance of meeting, and as compared to the guidance that we provide on our town website, that paper forms are to be submitted to the town clerk and electronic forms to the Planning Board. So we're working through the idea of whether we're meeting or published rules and regulations, or whether it's worth following the lead of many other communities and adopting, you know, a more systematic set of rules and regulations. But it's kind of fundamental to the submission for permits or approvals or endorsements that committee members have advance notice, and that's the issue.
Yeah.
We'll address it.
Yeah, and I would imagine, just like with us, I mean, you get a fair amount of information, it's helpful to have the information, at least a couple of days ahead of time, so you've read up on it.
Well, indeed, the Chair made that distinction, that the Planning Board is quite different from the Select Board, and I don't understand the rationale why it should be.
I don't know, okay.
Who chairs the Planning Board?
Paul DeM.
I think it does help to usually have information before you come to the meeting, I mean, that's, it's hard to read and vote on something at the same time, but yeah.
Well, I think it's important to say that the Planning Board members did vote on this in the discussion, to say that it was found that most members received the information in a timely manner where they can make the decisions that need to be made.
Okay, all right, well, somewhere it will sort itself out. All right, any other committees? Next? Yeah?
Housing tomorrow, and we're really trying to get a joint meeting of planning and housing. Housing is teed up and ready as soon as our consultant is ready, and again- Housing is teed up and ready as soon as our consultant is ready, and again, we're missing a little leadership on lining that up.
Okay. Dan?
Yep, so I think, as Scott hinted, the technology committee met, and Scott was nice enough to arrange a meeting with Joel McCullough, which I believe is a former coworker of yours in Chickapi? You've worked with him to some level, and he has experience of rolling out their fiber network. And he shared some of their experiences and pain points and importance of the communication aspects of getting the message of what a fiber optic network can bring to the townspeople out, because of, people might only see the expense associated with it and not the benefit, and it needs to be, the whole picture needs to be understood. And with that, his advice was really, the next step is getting the select board involved when we have, when we as a select board have time and resources and energy available to dedicate to that topic. His advice, which made a lot of sense, was to start putting, looking for groups that can work with us to make a, do a feasibility study. So he said, he knew a couple, and he was going to reach out to you, Scott, and give you those contacts, so we can at least get some estimates for what a feasibility study that is done independent of the potential towns that we may partner with, like Westfield or South Hadley, such that we have that independent view, because it is a large expenditure. And when we have that feasibility study together, he mentioned, Joel mentioned, that there's possibility for some grant funding for those types of feasibility studies. So once we have an estimate of what that cost would be, we would then be able to say, okay, we can look for some grants to get the feasibility study started. At that point, we, when I say we, I mean, in this case, the ad hoc technology committee can come to the select board and give this proposal for funding for a feasibility study, hopefully with a matching grant of some type, at the same time reviewing what has occurred up to this point to the select board relating to town broadband. So that's. And then, Dan, would be to look at, basically come up with a plan to how we would go about rolling out fiber throughout Southampton. His advice was that it's good to have an independent view on that from the views that you get from the towns you may partner with, especially since he felt, reviewing the partner in towns quotes there, they were a little bit of, kind of, at least at this level, rough order of magnitude estimates. So something that would help us understand better what we are committing to as a town and how we could best go about pursuing broadband throughout the town to uncover this cost and also provide the service at the same time.
Okay.
So that's the next steps for the committee, which will lead up to us meeting with the select board.
Sure, okay.
Chris?
Yes. So when the town of Washington went through that process, I was up there as their treasurer, and you're going to need the, more than likely, because I don't know where the money's going to come from, if you're going to do a borrowing for, that the state offsets, you're going to need that independent study to validate all the numbers in order to get the debt authorized.
That makes sense, yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Good to know.
Good to know that.
Yeah, because you've already narrowed down to probably two companies possible, but we haven't, you know, decided on anything yet. Obviously, it's a big investment going forward.
With the commitment, we want to step back, make sure we're making the right choices here, get as fully informed as possible, and I think that's where this feasibility upfront is going to really help us to make sure we have all the information we need to make the call.
Take our time and walk into it carefully.
That's right, exactly, yep. So that was the technology committee. Conservation commission, we talked about the bridge, so it's good. Community preservation, I haven't seen one of those meetings come up. The housing authority, we already mentioned, they have a meeting later this week, and we talked about the planning board. So I think that's all for me.
One thing, if I can put in a plug, you guys did your, basically your internet survey around town?
Oh, yeah.
And it is posted, the results of that are posted on the town website, on the ad hoc technology page. There's the results of the survey. It was from mid-May to mid-June-ish, so about five weeks it was up, and it was a series of questions about what internet you currently use, what do you pay now, how satisfied are you with it, et cetera. And from the results here, it looks like it generated 128 responses. So just go to the ad hoc technology page on the website, and you can see the actual results of the survey. So thank you for doing that, just to also get more information in terms of our background of what's going on. So, good, thanks, Dan. Okay, Cindy?
Okay, so I would like to report on the Board of Assessors and the Assessor's Office. The cyclical inspections that were announced have been completed, they're no longer happening. I think the data's collected, thanks for all the cooperation of town people. And the new data will be entered into the system by our principal assessor. Otherwise, things are going pretty smoothly in that office, I believe. We met today, and it's, tax bills will announce, so people come in with various questions, and that's a good thing that we can clarify for them. So if you have questions, and you can go to the treasurer's office, or you may want to come directly to the, to the assessor's office for questions. Secondly, the Board of Health, I've only attended one meeting since I was appointed as the liaison. I will say that I know there, Charlie Konecki, who is functioning as the health inspector right now, is involved with looking at some issues in town of perhaps things where there's been, you know, perhaps inappropriate dumping, et cetera, and so they've been involved with looking at various things like that. I can't really report anything else right now, I'm still trying to get my arms around the full functioning of the Board of Health. Finally, I see where Stephen Johnson's listed as open space committee, but I think that's me, because I think we didn't want to have both. Am I right about that?
I think so.
Yeah?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, but I will report on the open space committee, I'm the chairperson of that, but I will say, we had to cancel a couple of meetings for lack of a quorum and illness of the chair at one point, but we are going to meet on the 25th of July. We are looking very much at really understanding what our goals are going to be for this year. We have done a lot of work, as you know, with the large conservation project, and the town actually did the acquisition of one large property last week, I think it was finally, that was up on former road, formerly owned by Menard and Garfinkel, and so that's really kind of exciting. But there's other kinds of activities the open space committee will be looking at going forward, and I think those are my reports.
Okay, very good. All right, just briefly on my end, nothing new on the grant committee. We do have an opening on the grants committee, and we've got at least one person interested, but if anybody else is interested, feel free to reach out. We've got nothing being worked on at the immediate next week or two, but we're just waiting on results for a couple of things that have been submitted. So this Mass Trails one was one of those, so that's already good news. I think I had reported that the Council on Aging had received the Service Improvement Grant for some modernization efforts and some, I'm forgetting, it's called the Loop System, I believe, for better acoustics, better hearing within that room, especially for people that are having difficulty hearing. So there's a few things like that that were approved in the grant, and so that grant has come through. So the big one we're waiting for, of course, is that firefighter, assistance to firefighter grant, which hopefully at the end of the month, we'll know something on that one. So put in all your good thoughts for that one, so that we can get that. That would be huge if we can do that. And then just briefly, let's see, capital, sorry, Cost efficiencies committee, rather, has met, and as I mentioned, we're looking for another member or two that would like to join us, but we're going to start looking also at two things. So we started meeting with Randall and looked at a bit of the issues around the transfer station, which I know we've talked about here. You know, so the fees for this year have gone up, and similar to many other towns around, if you follow the news. But I think our goal is to try and see if we can help Randall at some point in time here, put together some sort of communication strategy, I don't know, public engagement, whatever we might call it, to help people understand, you know, what our current transfer station offers. We feel that, you know, there's a lot of people in town that may not really understand much about what some of those benefits are, and have come from communities where they basically have, the only choice is to have curbside, so at least let people know what does exist and what it means for us to get some work on the recycling end, on our end, for a variety of things, not just paper and bottles and cans, but there's lots of other things that are disposed of over there, namely textiles, which Randall keeps giving us incredible pounding, John, in terms of the amount of textiles that are being recycled, which is great. So we're going to take a look at trying to work with him to make, hopefully, the transfer station, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but to make the transfer station come to a break-even point at least, and try to help that move along, rather than letting it fall by the wayside. So that's one of our topics. And then, secondly, again, thanks to John's thinking here about looking at a longer-term capital planning exercise, where we're taking a look at all the various assets across town hall, all the departments, and figuring out when some of those are needing to be replaced, how we go about figuring out a longer-term schedule. There may be schedules at each department level, like at the highway department or the fire department, know when they want to replace an ambulance or a truck. But putting the whole thing together, so we can really have a big picture to see what that capital planning exercise is going to be, and then how do we go about really planning for that and putting money aside so that we're ready to fund it whenever that actuality comes up. But John, you want to explain that a little bit better than what I just did?
Well, it's, the past practice, at least as long as I've been on the select board, is to only look at, take a 360-day view, or one year. And many other communities have utilized a process and plan that the DOR has put out, like in 2012 or 2013, where similar to the budgets, you do a 10, 15, 20-year projection. For example, the useful lifespan of a fire truck is 20 years, so if you have one brand-new today, you should plan on replacing it in 20 years. Cruiser is usually 16 to 24 months, because there's a higher volume of mileage on those cars. So identifying the equipment, the street sweeper, for example, you know, the big-ticket items that we're never going to get, allocating 30% of free cash every year is never going to happen. To get to those items, that'll take care of a lot of smaller things, but it also means monitoring our debt limits and our borrowing capacities and looking for, you know, the bridge is coming on now, we know we have the public safety and the COA coming up at some point, if nothing else, just the land, and building that in so that we can find, necessarily placeholders, but kind of flatten out the borrowing needs and, you know, to use an X-figure, you know, should we develop a plan that says, you know, $500,000 every year is going to go to capital projects? And maybe we're not spending it this year, but we're going to set that aside, because next year, we need to buy a $950,000 fire truck.
Right.
And being transparent and communicating and putting that out there. If you looked at some of the other communities, and I have it in my bag, I'm going to give you a copy of it, Chris, so you have it, but Goshen, very small community that struggles a lot with their, well, the schools, they happen to do debt overrides. You know, they have a very well-written, spelled-out book that the finance team does in conjunction with town insurance that goes out to the voters, and it, every single penny that's spent, it's all explained in there, the trends are in there, and things are, it would be a lot of work to get it set up the first year. But then it's just updating data going forward.
That'd be interesting.
And I think, as I said before, when we've had to do these votes, it's, the more we can communicate and the more we can show the transparency, the fewer the questions that will be out there, and the more trusted we'll be when we ask the voters to vote for something.
Well, and I think, too, the advantage, obviously, of longer-term planning is that, you know, you go to a town meeting, and it's like, you know, we need a new sander, or we need, you know, we need the new cruiser, or whatever, and it's not a surprise to people. I mean, people will be aware that this is coming down the pike, you know, sooner rather than later. So I think that it's got a multiple set of advantages here. So Cost Efficiency has decided to try to tackle that, we're going to be inviting a finance committee to join in on it, and anybody from the capital committee that would like to join in on it as well. But we figured we're probably the most logical one that meets more frequently, and we can try and at least coordinate this process with Scott's help here. So we're going to be tackling that. So those are the main things that we're going to be working on, okay? Other than that, I think that's it. So some new business, got a bunch of end-year transfers. We thought we would have the finance committee with us tonight to be able to approve all these, but they, everybody had some level of conflict tonight, so we don't have them. But Scott, I'll let you take it from here, if you want to lead us through this exercise. And I think we do have a lot of backup information, you should have received it, so we can ask questions on those that are not perhaps the clearest in terms of what is this all about? I know I have a couple of questions myself, but go ahead, Scott.
So the first one is the library utilities, again. The, sorry, there's quite a few pages to sort through. Mostly for the HG&E bill and the Northup Electric. Next is the election registration expenses. I can pull up the explanation, that was a little bit of a later one, bear with me. So the town clerk encumbered the remainder of her expenses, and Bradley had included the transfer, which was for an additional warrant, that would have put her into a deficit, so it's to balance that out. The fire EMS building expenses, again, those are just for maintenance. The group health, retiree, and life insurance, the, talking to Jen, looks like there was a deficit on that part of it. Yeah, I think it was probably due to some of the retirements, but next year, we're going to look at a more realistic budget for all of our group life, and our group health insurance just looks like we just raid the group health insurance at the end of each year, so it needs to be more accurately kind of budgeted for with the headcount, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as we look at these, and we should actually just read the amounts that we're looking for, Scott, too, or we can go back and do that, but I guess I'm glad that we have the group health insurance line to take from, but at the same time, I'm looking at how much we, in essence, I guess I would say have over-budgeted or something to be able to take that, or a lot of people have not taken that group insurance because of whatever plans.
There's four openings at the highway, I'm sure she's assuming that they're all filled.
Could be already filled, yeah, planning that for being filled, so.
And then you have the one upstairs that you, so five feet on the family plan, that's $100,000.
Yeah, okay, well, that's a good point, okay. But yeah, I mean, so I guess we've lucked out that we've been able to take this from there, and so I'll take that back in terms of over-budgeting, it's not really, but we have not filled positions, which makes it available to us. Okay, that's fair. Yeah. Do we want to, how do people want to do this? Do you have questions on the various invoices as we go through, line by line?
Well, I, I mean, I have a question on A, the first one.
Okay, let's just take them one by one. So library utilities, let's just take a look at that, we've got the backup.
So that's HG&E, 7836 in Northrop, 1,044. And my question isn't, I don't doubt or dispute any of the charges, and the dates are within, like, three days of the closing of the year, but my question is, adding that money into the utilities in last year's budget, will that number be used to calculate whether or not we met the minimum allocation for the '25 budget? Is that line item, right? Because, and I don't, we don't count the entire library budget.
Right.
We take out certain things. I think capital comes out, and if utilities comes out, no problem, but if utility stays in there, are we not just, I mean, creating another problem for us, because we're not going to be able to meet that certification?
I don't know.
That I'd have to talk to John about.
Worth checking out, good question to check out, just to be sure. I mean, when we did the budget, they felt we were okay with what we had budgeted, but...
Based on what their existing numbers were.
Correct, yeah.
So adding more money.
Right. Does that throw it off, yeah?
And if it does throw it off, instead of putting that into utilities, can we put it into, can we put it into the capital? One of the line items that doesn't impact that? Or, I don't know, is there a workaround?
Okay.
Or vice versa? Is the mathematical equation so insignificant that when we round it up, we're actually going to be fine?
Yeah, okay.
That's my only question with that.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Yeah, we always have to keep track of that library and that percentage there, that's valid, yeah. Okay, so then, that was, sorry, the amount on that? I'm just looking at that, I lost it.
1122.54.
Okay, there we go. So that would be 1122 for the library utilities coming from the group. So that would be 1122 for the library utilities coming from the group health insurance. Okay. Election registration, just, you talked about that briefly, that big $4.39, is that right? And that's coming from the town accountant expenses? I guess what I didn't, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There's a couple of things that come from the town accountant. So the election registration expenses at 439, and the two fire EMS building expenses, 2184 and 6285, all come from the town accountant expenses. Okay. So back on the group health retiree, that's where you were, and that's a chunk of change here.
Yep, so that's the 15,000, or I'm sorry, the $15,021.40 that's going to cover the retiree, and then the group life insurance for the active employees and the retirees as well.
Was that, was that an unexpected retiree? That we didn't know about?
I think so. I know that, just talking to Jen, that there was some more, the retirees, retiree costs raised this year just because, you know, we had Ed retired and a few other retirees, so.
We had two, three, actually, so Joan and Tom gone, and at least three retirees, anyway. So this is for group health for the retiree and group life insurance for the retiree?
But, right, and had they not retired, it would have come out of the group health insurance, which is where you're pulling the money from anyways.
Okay.
The Town Hall building expenses, we had, this is for two things, the B&amp;G Mechanical, but the other part of that, which is the more expensive part, was we had a leak in our fire suppression system. Dave and I, we noticed that the compressor was running 24/7, so when Johnson Controls came out doing regular maintenance, they were able to actually find the leak and correct it. So they're probably going to have to come back again to do a more permanent fix, but it's one of those things that, the compressor's still working, which is good, and the fire suppression system is working, so. It was kind of an unexpected, that part was kind of unexpected, and then Ed had scheduled some work back in February for them to come in that they finally got availability for that wasn't quite aware of, so. So that entails that.
So these guys, BG Mechanical's on a service contract with us, correct?
Mm-hmm. And the next one is the Board of Health contracted expenses. That's for Charlie's position, and we have included the invoices for those. They might be, I have to find the page. There was backup.
Yeah, there were two invoices, one for May and one for June, I believe I saw.
88 and 89.
Okay, so that was, that's for those expenses. The police chief's salary.
But just on that, so that invoice, those two invoices total 81, $8,180. And there's no reference on, so am I assuming that the amount, there's a, the difference or the discrepancy is available already?
I believe so.
Where's the two invoices?
There was an email.
Page 88 and 89 of the PDF.
Yeah, there was a cover note from Jerry saying there's a balance of 2710 in contracted services. We request 5,500 so that we can pay the consultant for the services. He's already rendered in May and June.
Good.
Okay, so I think that, but the total is, you're right, it's around 8,500. So it's been a lot of, some septic work, but it's been a lot of other things, too, regarding some of our properties that have had issues that he's had to do some enforcement with, and a couple of them that are moving into even stronger sanctions, apparently. So there's been a lot more of that.
And this would be the end of this, right? Because the June invoice is in here.
Correct.
So anything from July 1st going forward will now go into that revolving fund.
I believe so, yeah. This goes through June 30th on the invoice, so it looks that way, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Next up, it was to cover the changes in the police chief's salary. Then we also had police building expenses, oh, I'm sorry, for 390449, and then police building expenses for $20.72. The next two, we also have gas and electric for Town Hall and the library for 75740 and H is for the, we finally got the ambulance back for the ambulance maintenance. It was a pretty, talking to the chief, it was a pretty significant repair. They actually had to replace the entire air conditioning system in the entire ambulance. It wasn't just recharging it or something like that, but the, the way he explained it, there was some metal that got into the system, and they couldn't flush it out, so they actually had to go in and replace the entire front and back air conditioning, which is...
Is any of that covered by the auto insurance policy?
I don't know about, I know it's out of warranty, I'm not sure about auto insurance. I can, I'll check.
Question, yeah.
Yeah. So that was for 1190820, and then...
$1,000.
The next are for Randall's, for the administrative assistant, for $305.41 for wages, and $550 for expenses, and I believe that the 550 invoice should be in the packet. The justification was that they had to utilize general highway expenses to cover the $50,700 in necessary machinery, maintenance over and above the machinery maintenance budget. So that's what that $550 would cover. Next up would be minutes for the Select Board, $130. Gas and electric for Town Hall for $2,201.6. And then the next two are for the special election expenses. The first one for town clerk expenses, $45.57, and election registration expenses, $1,499.40. Most of that, the mailing and ballot preparation and ballot printing. And then telephone, last one is for $241.69.
So the one on the election registration, the note on it below says election systems and software invoices. That's the note on the Excel for that, registration for N?
N, yeah.
Not sure, but, but anyway, related to the special elections, whether it's the tabulation of the machines or something like that, maybe? I don't know. Whatever we have to do there. But there is some postage also as a supporting document, so not totally clear, but that's okay. Got it?
It's the postage, $8.00.
I don't know, I can't tell what's there, but...
Let me double-check the email. I know I have an email from Lucy, I can just maybe double-check that.
And the, what was that for Verizon? So the total, we must have some money on account then for Verizon, because the invoices are showing 377, so there must be part of a bill already paid or something? Sure we've got enough on there. 241 doesn't look like, unless there's already a perfect payment already made.
I think there was some money left over.
Okay, it could be. So there might be money in the line, and this is the balance of what's needed to cover those bills? Okay, got it. Yeah, okay, anybody have any?
Pull Lucy's email.
Questions about this?
I have a...
Yeah, John?
I don't know which one it relates to, but I have a question on PDF page 49.
Okay. And that was related to?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to give the employee's name, but what it is, it's a reimbursement form for mileage.
Okay.
But if you look at the odometers, are we reimbursing them for using a town vehicle? Because the ending mileage on day one is the starting mileage on day two, all the way down. So that's not a, if that's the accurate mileage, that's not a personal car. It's not going anywhere other than here to there, so are they taking a town vehicle? I don't think so, but that's what that document tells me.
Yeah.
Do you see what I mean, Scott? Because you would have commuting miles home and then back work and...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there was something else, too, that, I can't find it right now, but the date on it looked really strange to me, too, but...
I can check for Randall.
I mean, I'm 99% sure that that is a personal vehicle. I just think for audit purposes, the, that should probably blanked out and just leave the two-point, I mean, we know it's 2.9 miles round trip.
Yeah.
But if that was randomly selected...
Yeah, just to make sure that matches up correctly. Right. Good point.
This is what, what happens when we take a lot of time to review.
Yep. Well, and some of these, too, I mean, you know, these Town Hall ones in terms of the expenses.
Yeah.
You know, the Town Hall Electric, I mean, I know Bradley's been trying to do these reconciliations with our Cowpower scenario here, our chiming into the biogas farm, et cetera, so that we get credits for our ever-source bill, but I truly have never totally figured out if we're coming ahead or not. You know, we have to pay out to be part of the biogas system, we get energy credits, and then we still, you know, I'm not clear how much of a benefit it is to us, but I'm generally supportive of the notion of it, but it's just sort of like, it's been very complicated to understand it as we go along. So I know he's been trying to reconcile it more frequently when it comes in on the ever-source bills, but, and I think it's not just for Town Hall, it's for the library and police, it's everything, it's all of that, right? So, yeah.
If you'd like, I'll make a motion to approve the Schedule of Proposed Budget Transfers for Fiscal Year 2024, Number Two, totaling a cumulative of $50,588.63.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion, and a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Stephen, discussion? So we are going to end up, these also have to be approved by Finance, so have you gotten any further thought, Scott, in terms of when they might meet? Or we can go ahead and act on this ourselves, and then they can decide if they don't agree or do agree?
Yeah. Hopefully, we're going to be able to do a Zoom meeting either Monday or Thursday, Friday.
Okay, and what's our, remind me the deadline? Don't we have a, by the 15th, is it?
Monday.
It's Monday?
Yeah.
So when you said Thursday, Friday, were you meaning this week?
Yeah, this week, or Monday at the latest, yeah.
Okay.
So, just to go back to the mileage, so that's actually not for Randall's vehicle, it's for...
I didn't want to say the name.
All right, yeah, it is.
So it's a personal vehicle?
I just checked with them, yeah.
Okay, personal vehicle, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So I have a related question, since I'm the warrant clerk, and I have this big fat warrant, W-24-54. All these yellow stickies are explanatory of a variety of things, but many of them, payment of that bill is contingent upon this whole set of transfers. So I'm wondering if I should hold off signing this? Because the Finance Committee has not approved. And what does that do to, you know, our whole payable system and...
What you could, what, well, technically, there's a motion, and we should take it, take the vote, and then what I would suggest is another motion to address your issue.
Mm-hmm.
Because first, we're just talking about the transfers, but then I would suggest that we make a motion authorizing the Treasurer to only release that upon receipt of Finance sign-off. So you can go ahead and sign off now, right?
Yeah, okay. So let us go back to the earlier motion, which was to approve the transfers that we've discussed tonight, knowing that Finance Committee will be meeting somewhere within the next three days, thereabouts, to do their set of approvals. Okay? So we have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor of approving the transfers as red?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, they are approved on our side. And now, next motion, yes?
This is warrant number?
Warrant number?
I make a motion that we instruct the Treasurer to only release warrant W-24-54 upon Finance Committee approving the Fiscal Year 2024, Number Two, transfers.
Okay, all right. Go ahead and second.
I'll second that.
All right, John, motion, Stephen, second. Any discussion on that, if there? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. So Scott, you relay that back to Jen, please, on that one. All right, very good. Next up, updates on the Audit Fiscal '22 and Fiscal '23, Scott.
So the last thing that we need for '22 is just the Corrective Action Plan, which I have a draft of, and I'll send out to the Select Board. The only issue was with Tanya being on vacation. She only has three days to act upon it, so she asked if we hold that until she's back, so she doesn't have to cut her vacation short. So that will hopefully wrap up '22, and then with '23, the Treasurer and the Town Account have begun sending all the information to Markham to begin the process with that. So we're in the early stages, but the, but it's rolling, so.
Okay, very good. All right, so that one's going, and we probably should, within the next meeting or two, I believe we have to sign the Audit Engagement Letter for FY '20, what?
'24.
'24.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just keep that on our list of things to do. All right, next up, Scott, you've taken a stab at doing a draft of a gift policy for the town. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely, let me just...
Can't find it here.
Bring it up here. So this was mostly a...
Page nine of the PDF.
Yeah.
A draft policy that was provided by KP Law. So this is something that we don't have on the books, but most municipalities do. It's really just an accepting of gifts, how, what the process is, what are some of the exclusions, you know, what are the, the limits that, you know, so we don't get bogged down in too much administrative work, you know, can the TA approve up to a certain amount, and how much goes before the Select Board? And mostly, this really kind of safeguards the town in case a town official accepts a gift that we may not actually want. You know, there could be contaminated property, there could be stuff that's worthless that we have to end up paying for disposal. So there's a lot of different scenarios, so this kind of just makes it a policy that has to be reviewed before we actually accept it. So without Select Board approval, then we won't actually accept the gift. One thing I do want to just point out is, I would actually probably delete J. That can probably be a separate property, I'm sorry, separate policy, and we already have a naming policy as well. Michelle was able to send over some additional stuff about, you know, if we accept, like, a bench, you know, what design it has to be, so I actually took all of that stuff already and tried to shorten it as much as possible. So I would actually just look at going up to about I.
And J, just being, just for people listening, gifts intended for installation on town properties, so these would be things that would be installed, and we might cut that out and make that separate from what you're saying, okay?
Like art installations, things like that.
Well, that's the note I printed under K. We already have a policy, so, in case you reference that. Backup under A, where I see the, I'm assuming Greg Corbo is with KP Law. So his note, his note there is saying that library trustees have an independent authority to expend gifts and donations, the library does not have to be included in its policy... The library does not have to be included in its policy. So I'm reading Number Four to mean that this policy shall apply to everybody in Town Southampton except if it's gifts for real estate, education, school-related, the Board of Library Trustees, so it's exempting them
Correct.
from it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I would say leave it there because it's specifically saying they're exempt.
Yeah, I think so too.
Whereas if we took that out and we left the schools in.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, yeah, no, I think, I think the way this reads is that it goes to everything given to the town except for gifts of real estate, right? Anything to the school or school-related purposes, Board of Library Trustees, eventually to the Affordable Housing Trust, and any other trusts that's been established, et cetera. I think, yeah, I think that should stay in too, yeah, I think that's clear and it should be, should be there, yeah. Sounds good? Yeah?
My question is, what made us decide to draft a gift policy? Is there any reason?
Is there an event?
You just woke up one day and said, hey, we need a gift policy?
Well, partly, partly yes, but actually, no, was it last, last year or the year before, I forget, a year before, probably. We went through, there is on our town website, a list of Select Board policies, which are not bylaws or town, there's Select Board policies that had not been updated since about, I don't know, 2018, thereabouts. So each of us on Select Board took three or four and we did some updated language and we have them approved, so those are all up there now. But true, we do not have a gift policy, and we have with the Senior Center Building Committee and the Public Safety Building Committee, we've got some major fundraising to be done aside from borrowing, et cetera, et cetera, so if we were to, you know, the Friends of the COA, for example, is talking about a capital campaign, so should that get going sooner rather than later, you know, and we need to be able to accept gifts. So this is sort of getting a little, well, a little bit ahead of the game, but I mean, I think it's good to have it in place. We haven't had to really deal with it before, but I think this is the time where we're going to be needing it, so it's kind of timely in that regard.
Great, it sounds like we're being prepared. So with that perspective, if we were, if the Council on Aging were to do some capital campaign, would the wording in our gift policy, would it support that initiative?
That's the intention, if I understand it.
I think so, because if we look at the definition here, right, so the gift or donation, so gift and donation are synonymous here, according to this. Can be a contribution of money, securities, tangible personal property, equipment, goods, or services that the town accepts and for which the donor doesn't receive anything in return. So I think that would cover about anything that anybody might desire to give us, I don't know. Maybe?
They didn't, they didn't spell out that exemption, Chapter Forty-one, Forty-five, Forty-seven. I was thinking that those were like the almanors and things of that nature, but it, because we already created something, we had, we had to cite what law it was to put the Pearson Estate money in there.
Yeah, something must exist, right, because, I mean, our grant money and everything else we get, I mean, we...
What about gift of, well, it's mentioned services, like volunteer time to do some work that would have otherwise have cost the town, for example, the installation of a branch or a bridge or something, is that fallen into this category?
Is there anything in here that talks about how you cost that? That's the question, is how do you, how do you determine the value of that?
Right, right.
There, there is a, there is a value policy, I think it's on...
Thought I read something about that.
Page two, valuation.
Number six.
Oh, yeah, number six on page two, right. Yep, go ahead, Scott, yeah.
I mean, I think most volunteer work would be under that thousand-dollar threshold. I think, you know, if we had some professional services like an architect or engineer that was going to volunteer their time on some of the major projects, I think that might be a little bit different. That we could definitely be easier to assign a, a value to for that. For most, I think most volunteer situations would probably be under the thousand-dollar threshold.
Yeah. And so the way this is reading is that, I mean, this could be a gift into any department, correct? And is, if the gift is for, is valued at a thousand dollars or more, it has to come before the Select Board. For under a hundred, for under a thousand dollars, it can be approved by the town administrator as long as the gift is appropriate for the mission and the needs of the town, the way we're understanding it. We can also reject gifts if we decide they're not appropriate. What else is there?
Well, I'm wondering if, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Yep.
I apologize, I can raise my hand. So earlier in this meeting, we talked about the, the town clerk utilizing volunteer time to augment the work that gets, needs to get done in that office, and those are volunteers, and that would generally have been compensated time by, by somebody if, if they were hired, and I know we're looking for someone, but that could exceed a thousand if, I don't know what the hourly rate is being utilized to determine, especially if we're talking to somebody that has the background as a town clerk or an assistant town clerk or something, so I just think you need to...
But the, that would only come into play really if, if somebody wanted, if somebody wanted to volunteer their time and in return wanted a document so that they could do a tax deduction on their personal return.
That's what it would be.
So the, so the easy way to address that is forbid that, is that we shall not.
We will not provide a tax document that says you volunteered your time?
For volunteering of time,
Yeah.
we, we don't, we're not going to assign a value to that. Because now we're getting into, okay, you're filling in for a sixteen-hour job, dollar an hour job, but, you know, based on your experience, because you're actually a sitting town clerk somewhere else, you should get thirty, I think it could get messy.
Well, truly, but the other thing is some of the grants that we've gotten, I think, in the past, there's opportunity to have town volunteers or any volunteers be like contributing to the
Correct.
the match.
That's part of the match.
And that would, that would get approved when the Select Board approved it.
Right.
Oh, okay, it's all with Select Board approval, okay.
And that actually gets costed out when there are meetings, like for the Hazard Mitigation Plan update that's coming up.
I see.
The town officials would have to be part of those meetings. You know, if it's a, it's a Randall or Fire Chief or whomever that attends.
Right.
If they had to spend two hours at a meeting, that gets costed and that gets turned into Bradley. I mean, we've got to account for it on the grant part. So that's a very different thing.
Yeah, but, and along those lines, though, I do think that since, since we're starting from not necessarily scratch, but we can kind of add something, and I know we're going to delete J and K, but maybe in J's place, or Six A. I think we should be controlling or monitoring, I think it's very important when somebody makes a contribution or gift, that it is acknowledged in writing. Especially if it's going to be money, especially if we're going to do a capital campaign.
Absolutely.
Because we're also going to want that tied up, but I also think it's important that it be uniformed. Like, I think, I think regardless, once, if it's under a thousand, it's the town administrator's office, so I think the town administrator should be sending out the acknowledgement letter, here's the standard form. That way we can also annually report.
Sure.
And if it's a Select Board approving, then the Select Board signs off on that letter.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But make that part of the
Yeah, going to add it into
package.
Into, yeah, make it a number seven or whatever there in that, and on that page two, yeah.
Okay.
That's not only a matter of courtesy, that's a matter of law. If the donor is going to take any tax benefit, they have to have a written acknowledgement. So following those particulars is really important. I'd like to ask a question about G, if we're ready for it.
Sure, let's scroll down.
Record keeping, reporting and record keeping. Gifts donated to the town shall be accounted for in accordance with applicable laws and standard accounting and record keeping, that's good. Revenue turnovers, so a check comes in, the head of each department that receives grants or donations of funds shall turn said funds over to the Treasurer in accordance with, is this a dangling participle? The town's financial management policies and procedures, do we have such?
We actually have a policy on that one.
Nice.
The Treasurer?
Yeah, on turnovers.
Yeah, for turnovers, we have them.
Thank you.
Actually, we do. That's part of our, trying to keep up with revenue reports, but yes, I mean...
Well, surely, surely, and then, you know, some measure of accountability, and I see how, you know, I'm, I'm the warrant clerk. I see how that can be effectuated, but we're about to step off into a whole new
New world, yeah, exactly. And a lot of the grants, just to say that a lot of the grants that we receive are not, very rare do we get one that, here's your money, you got it upfront. Just about everything is reimbursable, so we don't have that luxury of worrying about that. It's a different kind of complicated record keeping, but yeah, so all this has to be obviously turned over to the Treasurer, reported accordingly, but also in conjunction with the accountant, which is kind of silent here. I wonder if we should maybe mention something in terms of, you know, with the, with the account. I mean, we had been trying for any department, for example, that was getting a grant, to also report that to the accountant's office so that Bradley knew to set up an account and, you know, so I think we ought to maybe add something in here wherever you think it might be appropriate, it's just a thought.
For grants or donations?
Well, both, I mean, he's got to end up accounting for it too, right?
I agree, but, I mean, this, this, like, if we were getting a grant...
Yeah, there's a special account.
I don't, I don't think that that would fall under this policy. It's, what's the title of this? Isn't it just gifts?
It's gifts, so yeah, so it's not necessarily donation.
Because the line of, of the reporting, of Reporting A, one, all rights funds donated in accordance with applicable law, the law already says, any department head that gets turnover, it needs to fill out the turnover sheet in triplicate, they retain one copy. One top, copy goes to Treasurer, one goes to the accountant. So that should be happening on turnover, but a grant, there's no physical cash or device, right? It's just a, hey, congratulations, as we're going to find out pretty soon.
No, it's just that eventually, you know, Bradley does have to set up that account, so...
So I think we, I think we need a grant award policy, this is what you shall do.
Separate thing, yeah, okay.
So just a real-life situation that's about to happen related to the Public Safety Building Committee is a donation of some professional services for creating a brochure and the postage, and then also another donor is covering some of the cost of that. Does that mean Bradley should be creating an account for that, which is exceeding?
There's no money that comes into the town coffers, no. That has nothing to do with us at all.
It's a gift, though.
But it's...
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, that would just, I mean, there might be some input from the committee, but it's not an official committee activity. The brochure.
Right, and again, if they're looking, if they're, what I also heard postage, so if they're looking to get, if they're looking to get credit for covering the postage so they can take a tax deduction, then that would have to follow this process.
There would be a letter or something that would have to go out.
Because that's the gift, that's the, that's the, they made that payment on our behalf.
Right.
Right.
So I guess we don't know that, that would be a question to ask back to the committee and the people that were involved in creating that brochure.
Okay.
Question that I have is, is this an advocacy function like a 501(c)(4) as compared to a charitable or municipal purpose 501(c)(3) or equivalent? Because political or campaign donations are not tax deductible.
Right.
We, so do we need to worry about these services if the function is not deductible?
Right, so if, if there was a potential donation or a gift of, you know, vote yes on whatever ballot question is coming up, we wouldn't be able to accept that because it's, it falls under the advocacy.
Outside the town.
Yeah. If they wanted to donate lawn signs that said vote on September eighteenth, you know, that's just a neutral, that, that would be different.
Right.
Maybe this is common in other towns, but in Section D, there's a Recreation Department? I don't know about Recreation Department.
That'd be our Parks Commission.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, we have to change it, Parks and Rec, another.
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, yes, sample, so if somebody had a gift, for example, to the Cemetery Commission or the Fire Department or whatever else, the initial review, according to this document, would be by those heads of department.
Yeah, we get the other town department catch-all.
Right, yeah, and then following the, the value of the one thousand, higher or lower, who would have to look at that and approve it? But I totally agree in terms of acknowledging the, the receipt of whatever gift in writing.
Are you looking for action tonight, or is this a heads-up?
I, I think this is just more for informational purposes. I wanted to give the Select Board, you know, first look at this and then I would send it out to different boards and committees and employees just to see if there's any comments or questions that may come from it, and then I would bring back the final one with, you know, properly edited with all the references to Southampton specific for, for approval.
And you wouldn't, you wouldn't see us needing to act upon this within the next sixty days, meaning that there's nothing, there didn't, there's no gift looming out there, coming down there, might appear less than sixty days. And the reason why I say that is because if you're going to circulate out to all the committees and departments, which is great, and get their feedback, we can't approve this until we do a first reading and at least, and generally then print it out for public on the webpage for thirty days for public comment before we pass the policy.
Yeah, we've usually, it was only fourteen days when we posted the other ones.
Okay, so is there anything coming in forty-five days? That's, I leave it to you guys to think about that.
Okay, yeah, when we, when we did the last Select Board policies, I think we posted them
For fourteen days?
For fourteen days, I think it was, yeah, ten to fourteen days.
And then we, and then we take the final?
Right, yeah, there, there was not a, we had our discussion here, there wasn't any, there wasn't a public hearing of any sort that I recall on those things. It was, it was the draft.
We read it.
The new draft policy, they were read out and posted, yeah. I don't know, I mean, I think you wouldn't, you're going to have a, your department head meetings, they'd probably be the most likely ones to comment, more so than some of the boards and committees, I would think, but I mean, you could set some deadlines in terms of when you want them to get back to you if they can do that.
Five business days and...
Yeah, no, I mean, I'd like to get it kind of cleared up sooner rather than later, but, so, yeah. But if anybody has any further thoughts after tonight, I mean, maybe just shoot Scott an email and we can incorporate that, yeah.
I'm very supportive of it. I think it's ready for that next round of review and editing. As a practical matter, can the town receive gifts of securities, or do you have to tell the donor that their broker has to, you know, go through the gyrations and send a check?
I believe we can.
I, I tell you what we did in Hoyok, which there's no reason we couldn't do it.
A bunch more policy.
Well, no, but you, if you have an account, like this, this often happened with scholarship accounts, right? So the same philosophy is the class of nineteen forty would have, well, yeah, it was nineteen forty at the time. The class nineteen forty would have their fiftieth reunion or sixtieth reunion, and then a lot of the members would pledge stock, so then they contact the town treasurer, the city treasurer's office, here's our account number, here's our broker. The stock is transferred into our account, they get a hundred, credit for a hundred percent of the capital gains from the town, right? That whole cycle, that whole thing, yeah. So municipalities can do that.
Good. It takes longer than you would hope to set up such facilities. The financial institutions are relatively immovable, particularly with non-investor accounts, you know, you're a charity or a municipality, so. Good luck.
Okay, we'll get, get working.
Well, that's our stabilization money, our OPEB, those are both on me. So we already have a broker, it would just be a matter of if we were to go to them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, very good, thanks for that input. Next up, capital asset planning, I kind of talked about that, I think, under the cost efficiencies, I don't think I have anything more between John and I to say. We're just going to start tackling that and we'll, maybe next time we'll, we'll send you around this spreadsheet that Bradley's worked up that has got the entire set of town assets, so you can see what we do already know, and that will be informative, I think. Vacation carryover, Scott?
Motion to approve Chief Ellingsworth's request for sixteen hours of carryover time.
Second?
All right, perfect. Any comments or questions? All right, if not, can I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, here are no opposition, that is passed. Leave carryover, okay, and then the last thing we had on here was this draft Committee Board Report Schedule, which I think made it in the packet.
Page thirty-three.
Thank you, somewhere in here. I did chop down quite a bit of the Committee Reports that we had had in the past. Senator Velez and Rep. P's usually come in together, and I put that toward the end of the August meeting, but we'll always have to verify with them in terms of where their, their schedules are, if they're in town or down in Boston or whatever, so that may be movable, but this tried to take into account, for the most part, that many of us are on various committees and would be reporting regularly without having, and some of us being the chairs of those committees, that we don't need to have somebody else necessarily come in. So we've tried to keep it to the, or I've tried to keep it to the ones that we don't hear from, for example, September, Greenway Parks and Cemetery. Parks and Cemetery would be one. Town clerk coming in in October before the next presidential election to give us any input we need to know there. Community preservation, historical and conservation, even though, Dan, you're on, you're on both of those. It may be something that they have to do for a town meeting, for example, or some, some big project that they're working on that maybe the chairs would want to come in and talk to us about. So, I don't know. But all those are kind of, I tried to sort of put them in order that seemed to make a little bit of sense. Highway transfer station, December before the winter starts, et cetera. Schools in the February timeframe. So, anyway, it's quite a few less than what we had before.
On the April one, can we change, can we modify the building to also be Building/B tree One?
Ah, sure. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, can add him on there. Yep. Thank you. Okay. So, any thoughts, any, anybody that's really missing that you would like to have come in here? I did not put East Hampton Media on here, honestly, but I thought we could always just invite them in as a presentation, you know, under other, you know, just a regular presentation report, rather than being one of these report-type people. And we could, you know, if Rep. Pease and Senator Velez are not available in August, we might just have them at a separate time, too. But it's just trying to, for the most part, just get one, one of our meetings a month for this kind of thing. And there's a couple, a couple months where we do have long months, and so I've built in a couple there. And then I think on the, I couldn't find, I think Ed sent out some different instructions, but the second page of that, these are the instructions that we'd given people for the previous year, and I couldn't put my fingers on the one that they might have been working under this last year. But if we wanted to change the, sort of the topics, we were trying to guide them in terms of, you know, what they can spend, you know, 10 minutes talking to us about, with another, you know, maybe five minutes of questions and answers or whatever. So, current priorities or activities, budget spending, status or concerns, any grants received or applied for, and how that impacts their budget, personnel staffing, if applicable, plans for the next six months, and any, any long-term issues that we need to be aware of. So, I think that's still generally okay unless you've got some other thoughts.
I think it's very comprehensive.
Nothing's missing.
I wonder, just because you mentioned kind of forming a better capital plan, would this be the place to get their feedback on any updates that you want to add to this long-term capital spend projection, or is that covered under the work that John's doing?
I think part of what the committee would do would be sending out the request, because we already, we already have a document, it just hasn't been updated, and then build from that.
Yeah, we'll hand it out for the next meeting. Bradley's in the process. We've got FY '22, but FY '23 Bradley's updating, but it's, it's literally every piece of equipment that we own.
Okay.
And so, we'll, we'll share that with you. I just saw it myself recently.
So, the instructions say long-range issues, and I would promote that higher up in the list, in fact. But I don't know if it's unhopeful to add the word, or words, or capital needs, just to keep it on the front of the mind.
Sure, we can. I think, again, these are going to be staged throughout the year, so I'm hoping that we're going to...
Building a culture.
You know, right. But I think, you know, we're going to have something to work from by having looked at the current list and then going back to the department heads in particular, to say, okay, this is what we have for your capital requests. Is there something else here that we're missing, for example?
Right. There will be several channels.
I think it'll be there.
Having sat through these now for four years, the, they, when it goes out like that in the bullet form, literally, those are the responses you get. And some departments, it doesn't apply to, right? So, somehow there has to, and not just the capital, but some of these bullet points, like, it'll say staff, and we don't have any staff. Well, okay. So, somehow there's got to be, these are just suggestions. You don't have to answer every single one of them if they don't apply to you. There's got to be some, I guess, instructional paragraph in there.
Well, it says, "If applicable", but okay, yeah, we can modify that.
You know what I mean, though.
Yeah, I do.
After these.
Sure, absolutely. No, I definitely know that.
Make your case succinct.
Yeah, so respond to what is appropriate to your, your situation.
And if something is missing, feel free to add.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's fine. No, I'll work with that. And then Scott, well, if you're having your department head meeting, we can get that ready for that and do that. So, is everybody generally okay with this?
Yep.
All right, fine.
Well, you spoke about the sequence of things, and it makes sense in the main, but putting planning and housing off into the spring, we're going to need to develop additional channels for engaging those interests in particular, those others.
Sure.
Around major projects like...
Right. And I think that'll happen also, but, yeah. I mean, they could move up maybe a little bit earlier.
Keeping it in front of mind.
Yeah, okay. No, good point. Yep, got it. And like, for example, I didn't put in anything in here about the Public Safety Building Committee, or the Senior Center Building Committee, because I figured, you know, that'll be part of our kind of routine reporting in a way, so I guess I didn't feel a need to have that be a special, come and tell us something that we, I don't know. I was trying to alleviate a little bit of duplication.
More than once a year, yeah.
Well, I was trying to alleviate a little duplication, but I don't know. We'll see how it goes. Okay. Any other business that can't wait until our regular July 23rd meeting that anybody knows about? Okay. If not, Scott, I'm going to ask you just to run through the old business items and just give us some, a few words of update, if there's something there.
Nothing on the East Street, the Greenway. We're still waiting for Tianbon to get approval from D O T for their updated schedule. So, once that moves forward, then hopefully we can get up to the 75% completion.
Okay.
Assistant accountant, we are interviewing next week, and probably the week after as well.
Do you have a lot of applicants, or what do you have?
We did a lot of, I, between the list that Bradley and I did, we have about eight or nine candidates that we wanted to interview. You know, a couple will drop out, obviously, so, in the meantime. So, we're, you know, we hope to get maybe four or five good interviews.
And that'll be you and Bradley during interviews?
Yep, for the initial ones. And then after that, that's only for the first round, and then, depending how that goes, we'll probably expand it to a broader committee. Surplus equipment disposal, I don't have any updates on that. Cannabis negotiations, hopefully in the next week or two. I know Blue Skies, which is Dreamer's consultant, has been reaching out, so hopefully, we'll have at least an initial meeting to talk about how we plan to negotiate the post-community agreement. Wi-Fi installation, we have the equipment, and it's slowly going. We just have to finish Novus, and some of the wiring has to be done, and that'll be done over a week, and to prevent any service interruptions. Hazard mitigation plan, haven't done much in the last week or two. I still got to talk to the chief. That's still a priority. We do have to submit our quarterly report for July 1st, which I have planned to do tomorrow, but we still have to get the committee together, so...
And probably have to reach out to the PVPC consultant, who's going to facilitate that, and just find out their, their scheduling and their availability, availability too, right? Because they may be jammed up with another community.
Yep. Our green energy grants have been approved by the state.
Yes, yes, finally.
So...
Seven years later.
So, now they're just working their way through Eversource, just for final review. Like, for example, the, I just got an email today that Eversource has sent to the engineering department, the town hall lighting, for some reason, which does make sense to me, but everything, all the major parts are done. We're just waiting for the final. Okay, I did sign the agreement with the state for the funding as well, so that was actually sent yesterday.
Okay. And is it Eversource, or there a contractor that actually does the work? Or, we don't have to bid it out separately, do we? They kind of deal with it, right?
Right. They do have to have final approval, though.
Yeah.
And I forget the name of the company.
Yeah, breathe.
That we've been working with already. So, they're going to do the actual installation of it.
Okay, good. Great.
Classification plan, yep, so starting to get them in. Right now, it's just a matter of collecting data, and then once we get everything in, sorting through it, then we'll take the next technical step, which is organizing, yet figuring out, you know, what type of compensation structure we want to use. But right now, it's really just data gathering. So, for the next month, it'll just be Excel sheets, so...
And you will be talking to Collins about how unpleased we are, displeased we are with the result. But I, do we have any recourse in terms of paying the bill? You said you got a bill recently?
I still, I mean, unless, was it like a couple thousand dollars?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand? Yeah, so, we can go back to the minutes, but it was a, it was a DLS grant, so...
Yeah, community...
Right. They're not going to give us, the state's not going to give us the money through a charity sheet to then pay. It's, here's what we signed.
So, we think it's already paid then?
You sent the bill to the wrong agency.
Yeah, I think they probably still need authorization from us, though, before they answer the funds, I'm thinking.
I make a motion to order the town minister not to sign that.
Right. I did email Mary to try to set up an appointment, so we're not going to move on that until, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever recourse we do.
And I'm sorry, that bill was received last fiscal year, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think there's something there, though. The message should get back to the state. We as taxpayers to the state are funding, paying for something that was crap.
And unfortunately, I mean, I don't know, it's probably not appropriate to say, but I think the Collins Center is kind of the go-to for many communities. And it's just, it just makes me wonder, you know, how much stuff is kind of, what's the word, kind of...
Student project?
Well, or roach, or something that isn't, you know, really fully...
It does have an effect.
Well researched. I mean, or just, they just kind of take it from one and do something similar for the next, and there's not a lot of, you know, real thought put into it. From, I mean, from what you shared with us, it just, it's a mind-boggling thing about what we didn't get, but...
It can affect the markets. I mean, because, you know, in our group, if half of our communities that were comparing ourselves to use the Collins Center...
Yeah, well, there you go.
Their data is incorrect.
Sure. The whole market gets skewed in that regard. Yeah, Cindy?
My question is, and this is obviously the second or third time I've heard this discussed, do they have any answer to our unhappiness, or had they been told how unsatisfied we are, and have they responded? I mean, like...
That's the meeting we're having.
That's, okay.
Yeah, all right.
They were used when we did a town administrator search prior to you, to the previous one. The Collins Center was the company or the firm that was used. I was brand-new to it, but it seemed like they were satisfactory in that particular role, but I don't know.
I mean, it could be, you know, a variety of things, but it just, it's, you know, we put so much stock on, I'm going, we had actually another very qualified, I think, applicant that was not local, and we decided to go more local than the other one. And it's just, you know, it's unfortunate that they have a reputation that kind of drives, in a way, communities, I think, to go toward them. But then, when we really sit down and analyze what we were expecting, and again, I'm not totally sure. I don't recall ever seeing the actual scope of work they were given to know, you know, if our expectations are far and above what they were told to do. I don't know in terms of that. But anyway, I just think we ought to at least register our disappointment. For sure. Okay, anything else? That's it? All right. Thank you, Scott. Got a couple PCFs, I guess.
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
All right. I move that an emergency new hire, a two-week appointment, part-time, non-benefited volunteer to the Council on Aging.
Volunteer coordinator. Volunteer coordinator. Got a volunteer, a volunteer coordinator.
Oh, volunteer coordinator, grade two, step nine, 1990 per hour, 10 hours per week effective June 2024. The person's name is Andrea Baroxas.
Okay.
Andrea Baroxas, also a new hire, part-time, non-benefited volunteer coordinator, step two, grade two, step nine, 1990 an hour, 10 hours a week.
Second? All right. Motion is second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And lastly, Judy Zedonis, Administrative Assistant, Town Administrator's Office, not to increase hours, but to fluctuate weekly hours per pay period without exceeding the biweekly total.
Second? All right. Just a point of discussion. This is something that I think honestly fell through the cracks. I had talked to Ed about increasing Judy's hours to have it up to 19, so that with a new town administrator coming in and not knowing the kinds of work and support Scott might need, that we would make this more than a 16-hour-a-week job. Judy had, at the time, expressed that she wasn't wanting to necessarily work 19 hours every week, but she would be willing to do, you know, 16 one week and up to 19 the next week or something. So, her maximum pay period amount would be 35 hours. This unfortunately, it didn't, we didn't budget it. I guess we thought that Ed had put it in the budget, but according to Bradley, it's not there. So, we, yeah, we're stuck with the 32 hours for right now, until we can make any changes to that. But this allows Judy to have a little flexibility of, you know, fewer hours than 16 one week, but then if you need her for 20 hours, or 19 hours rather, the next week, then that still allows her to do that. So, anyway, it slipped through the cracks. So, it was not the intent originally when I had talked to Ed about it, and just didn't happen. So, I'm sorry on that part. But at least, this gets Judy the possibility of still staying at the 32 hours total for the pay period, but giving you some flexibility, Scott, in terms of how you need to have her here, so, okay? All right. We have a vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we've taken up the license and permit already. We've got some minutes to approve for...
I move that we approve the minutes of February 27th, all of these in the year 2024. So, February 27, May 23, June 17, and June 18.
All right. Second? All right. Any discussion?
I will not be able to vote for the whole group as you've presented it, because I was not on the board on February 27th. So, can we just do that one first?
Okay, just do February 27th by itself, okay?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I abstain.
Okay, abstain, Cindy, four and one abstention. And then they vote for May 23, June 17, and June 18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. And Cindy, as the clerk, you will sign those tonight?
Okay, thank you.
And I think there was one from the previous meeting...
I did sign one.
Okay, maybe.
Of a previous meeting.
Scott will have them if you didn't. And then we have our select board meetings on July 23rd, August 6th, and August 20th. As we run into September, I think we're going to be running into Labor Day, so we may have to look at that. Scott had done up the calendar, and there's a couple of dates. I think the Labor Day one, and Columbus Day, and maybe Christmas Eve or something are all, if not the actual day of our meeting, but within a day or two of our meeting. So, we may have to do a couple of adjustments on that. But we can get through August, I think, with our regular schedule. So, July 23, August 6, and August 20.
Can I, a question, please? Maybe it applies to others, but myself, I actually am on vacation locally in this time zone for one of those times. Is it possible to do a Zoom in?
It's possible. Yeah, Scott can send you a Zoom link to remote in to us. Yes, exactly. Okay, we will be going into executive session, and I don't have the MGL reference here. I don't have it on my agenda, sorry. But just to say, we will be going into, I'll read this out, but it's, we're going into an executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This is Local 98 Highway.
Yep. MGL chapter 38, Section 21, number, section two.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So, with that, could I have a motion to essentially move into executive session? Or, yeah, so, do we need a roll call vote on that one?
Lumbra, aye.
Yeah.
Levalli, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, so we will move into executive session. We're not going to return to the meeting, and we are adjourning this meeting at 7:49. So, let us do that. We'll take a couple-minute stretch break, and then get back to an executive session. Thank you very much.
I will email Ted those information on the side.